I'll be running the meeting tonight. Today, our president Mark Root buried his mother. So, but it was very nice for many people that went last night to visitation, so most there for the funeral. So, I'm just asked for a few seconds of silence in honor of Mark and his mother. Okay, first on the night agenda, Engineering and Transportation Committee, Mr. Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Bill Number thirty-five twenty-four A. Appropriation for hundred thousand dollars, Department O two-two Surveyor Auditor, Mr. Bobby K. Attorney Attorney Auditor, Eddie.
So, the, this hundred thousand dollars was received right before Christmas of twenty twenty-three via A C H. Um, our normal protocol in the Auditor's Office is our Finance Director sends out a notice to the Fiscal Officers asking, you know, does anybody claim this money? Um, at that time, nobody claimed it. So, we put it in unclaimed revenue in the General Fund, which is normal prop- normal process for us. And then, a few weeks ago, I P G came to us asking, hey, did we ever receive this? And so, we did. So, now this Form D is separating, creating a new fund for the grant and putting this hundred thousand dollar revenue in that grant. And if you have any questions about the project itself, Bobby K is here to answer those questions.
Question for Bobby, Mr. Brian.
Mr. Jen, could you explain to us, like, I was curious where the ditch was, and I could have found it out, it would make a lot, but. So, on the San Joe River, what were ditched?
What were ditched is in Greenwood Manor subdivision north of Stula, at the end of Ballard Drive. Mark, you might be, Brian, you might be aware of where that is. I don't know, just a little launch there. But, uh, I gotta give John Law a lot of credit, because it started in twenty-two. Trying for this permit, there was a group of residents that petitioned the drainage board to have that, uh, footwork by you dredge, because there couldn't get any boats or any activity back around fourteen, fifteen homes off the San Joe River. Uh, so, John worked with D N R and Army Corps Engineers to get the permit process going. And a little loan applying for grant, if we see one hundred probably want a grant. We had to go through, uh, drainage board, obviously, had to go offer bids for the project, but there was a company that does work throughout the state and really only one of them, had to bring in four hours. And it's an excavator on that, drive three quarters of a mile back and forth each day for about a month. And each day, I mean, he took out about five hundred forty cubic yards of sediment. And they finished the project in December, and then that's a field. So, very happy.
You're happy with the quality of the work and very happy.
Yeah, I mean, I have pictures of the project, and you wanna, I took, I took, a lot of them wants to see it, but, uh, like, like I said, I got it written down, because he was the ringleader with the residents back in twenty-two when all this started. You know, but it's a long process, you know, dealing with the D N R.
Better recurring grant every year?
No, that layer grant, you, you can, but in this case, you had to specifically use it for the little ditch.
Okay.
You know, these grants are specifically designed to be used for the D N R. Yeah, specific project. Oh, you know, we got another one. I think we fly for another one, and got one for a little bit gas ditch up in Ranger area that is still in December, starting coming in. In the winter, you know, on that one. Keep an eye out for that, exactly, when it comes in.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Got a motion on bill thirty-five twenty-four A. Bush move favorably? I have a motion favorably, a second, all in favor, high and opposed. Number thirty-five twenty-four A passes favorable, whole council. Mr. Big.
Thank you, thank you, Thomas. Next, Human Services Criminal Justice Committee. Great.
Bill number thirty-five twenty-four B, an appropriation of three thousand dollars Superior Court. Ms. Sheriff, hi, Liz Harley, Chief Judge of the Superior Court. Thank you all for having me. With John Barhite, our Court Administrator. First, I'd really like to express condolences to President Root on behalf of the Superior. Uh, we're asking for a new appropriation of three thousand dollars, uh, for what, when I spoke with John Murphy about this in Abbey originally, I called it special projects, uh, anticipating things like our roving ceremonies. We've had so many new judges over the past few years, and, uh, we're scrambling to get money from the Bar Association to help us with those, uh, you know, things like that, things like our, uh, luncheons with the other branches of government, like we had a couple of years ago. We plan on doing that later this fall again and like to make that a regular event. Our goal also is to, uh, find ways to bring the courthouse or open the courthouse to the community with things like school tours, uh, presentations, things of that sort. It kind of came to a head, I will say, um, when Judge Barnoca retired. There was a reception in his courtroom in honor of his, uh, twenty-five years of service on the bench. And his staff paid for that out of their pockets, uh, because we don't have any budget to do anything like that. So, we're asking for the three thousand dollars to do those types of things that I've mentioned. Uh, any other projects that we might think up along the way, uh, that can be beneficial, uh, to the community.
Good, you asked for this motorcycle, made up.
Asking for it earlier than this, but going forward, yes.
You're reasonable, thank you. Did you ask for it in the last place?
We did not. I honestly, it's just not something I had thought of until, like I said, Judge Barnoca's retirement. And I saw what a nice, uh, event his staff put on, but realized the cost that came out of their pockets. People that, you know, not maybe easy financially to do something like that, and they did it anyways because it was important to them. Uh, and I know that people contributed once they found out that that was happening. But still, it would be nice to have some funds to recognize people when they retire, celebrate people when they come in, and again, find ways to open a court to the community.
There are a couple departments for motion, budgets, commissioners. Council, because you had a employee that was paying for all your refreshments for a while out of her own pocket. You added that in your life, in your budget as well.
E P S A, also. Okay, zero motion.
All those in favor, second.
Uh, all those in favor?
I, I, I.
Opposed. The bill number thirty-five twenty-four B moves forward with favorable recommendation. Thank you very much, thank you. And bill number thirty-five twenty-four C, transfer of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars prosecutor.
This is semi-housekeeping. We have a Department of Corrections small grant for a hundred and eighty-nine seven ninety. The Department of Corrections requiring alternating grant are fund numbers. So, we're following their guidelines, our guidelines, uh, the Auditor's Department, and they'll all make fund numbers, even numbers and odd numbers. No money involved except transferred from one fund to the other. Anybody with the Department of Corrections grants this year will have to do the same thing.
Any questions? Is there a motion on bill number thirty-five twenty-four C?
Send it favorable.
Second, all those in favor?
I, I.
Opposed. Bill number thirty-five twenty-four C moves forward with a favorable recommendation. Bill number thirty-six twenty-four, Salary Amendment, uh, Prosecutor combined with an appropriation of five thousand eighty-two dollars and two cents.
Chief Deputy says stick. Valories are determined by state. Yes, by the state. Currently make them thirty-three sixty-six. New rates effective July first will be one thirty-seven, six thirty-five. And this is to bring our two chief deputies up to that level. And this includes the friends that goes with it.
Any questions?
Yes. Uh, will this be retroactive to the first of the year or effective July first, or maybe the change now effective July first?
Else?
Not on your committee, but you probably will see a corresponding adjustment probably needed for public defender, and I guess we're gonna ask that question at the moment. Because their salaries, a percentage of the processing, so that's a fair, that's true for them.
Some type of peg, right, at seventy-five percent or sixty-six?
Kind of depends on particular person, how we've got them employed, some are, we have a few full-time people. Most of our people are either fifty-five or sixty percent.
Okay.
So, uh, the chief deputy's father, he had sixty percent.
This is good for us to keep in mind, it'll require corresponding changes, that they have to make a percentage of their prosecutor's salary.
Chief Deputy makes seventy-five percent of what's the budget. That's out of the term, yeah.
Is there a motion? Still favorable?
Second.
All those in favor, are opposed. Bill number thirty-six twenty-four combined with bill number thirty-five twenty-four D moves forward with a favorable recommendation. Uh, bill number thirty-seven twenty-four, Salary Amendment, uh, Community Corrections combined with an appropriation of thirty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
That was, let's move to next one.
The commissioners asked for it in the meeting?
Yes, they did.
Should we make the motion on that?
Jamie, can we make a motion?
Might as well.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Table bill number thirty-seven, table, right, table thirty-seven twenty-four combined with thirty-five twenty-three. Uh, bill number thirty-eight twenty-four, Salary Amendment, County Jail combined with an appropriation of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Good evening, Sheriff Bill Redman, office is located at the jail, four oh one West Sample Street, South End. This, uh, salary amendment appropriation is a result of our last discussion, which was on February twenty-seventh. And the, uh, request that was made for the Auditor's Office to potentially look at, uh, assist us in coming up with some figures for pay raises for our jail staff. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the, um, Auditor's Office, specifically Abby, for all the hard work and everything she did to put these, uh, numbers together for us. And Mr. Dalton, for his assistance. Uh, Major Steve Noonan should have, he should have received an email from him last week, um, giving you those numbers. Just a little update, uh, if you recall from the February twenty-seventh meeting, we were fifty, uh, corrections officers short. Um, as of today, we're fifty-six officers short. Uh, we've progressed a little bit. Um, we haven't conducted exit interviews with everybody, but the few that we did of the six that are, have announced that they're leaving, it was because of the draft. They're just getting tired of getting drafted over and over and over again.
Mandatory overtime?
Mandatory, the draft instead having to stay over, yes, sir. Um, a couple other updates, though, we did, uh, ask to, uh, civilianize the front tower. Uh, essentially taking jail guards out of the front tower, putting them back in the jail and civilianizing that, those two positions. We currently have seventeen applications for those two positions, which is good news. We currently have twenty-one applications for corrections officer positions. So, that's a good thing. And then, we also, uh, came up with the idea of having part-time workers coming in, former jail guards that used to work there. We've got a lot of interest. Um, and we currently have ten applications for part-time. So, even though we've progressed a little bit, we have some positive, uh, movement. And so, we are certainly excited about that. So, that is what this appropriation is for in the salary amendment, to give those current jail staff members, um, additional pay raises. And then, of course, uh, the starting pay bumped up to, uh, surrounding departments our size, uh, to be compatible.
You, is the twenty-one new applications, that's more than we've had lately?
It is.
Is there a reason why you're suddenly getting announced?
Well, we don't know if it's just because of the media, um, coverage of our current conversation and talking about getting, uh, pay raises. We, uh, of those twenty-one, um, she's currently our, our, um, recruiting officers doing background checks on eleven of them, and then she'll start with the additional ten. But it, uh, it is promising that we're at least getting applications, and we're getting more of them in the last few weeks.
So, with that, like, how would that compare to the month prior?
Um, if, that I don't know.
I guess, yeah.
Generally, I think the monthly for was, it has a pretty another issue, sorry, state unit, vector officer, oral sample. The other issue that has helped is keep done so. She's become very progressive in what's doing as far as recruiting, gone to the high school. Had, had high school kids in for jail tour. This is, um, in state, and the eighteen-year-old would be a practice officer, gathered in twenty-one to be a police officer. So, although we don't want to email eighteen-year-olds trying to handle the fail, it is a good step for kids that are interested in, unfortunately. So, we have. We, I think, that combination is plus the media coverage has helped.
Question.
I do look, sorry. Uh, Amy, just, it's looking like, based on what I've been told, what I'm seeing, a lot of this was achieved through a reduction in number of personnel in certain positions. This is, this is an additional with no reduction?
Right, there's no reduction in personnel, so, um.
Well, it does.
Yeah.
It, it spread the ranks a little bit for longevity, Mark. Or, and it says, okay, thirty-five to forty-five reduced down to, to be seventeen at fifty, and they spread it out to pick up some more longevity ranks?
Right, so if you
There's some additional appropriation in all this?
It is all additional appropriation.
No, none of this is coming from within. But.
Correct.
How are we at a, a
So, on, on this, on this first one, it does help a little bit in the sense where they're currently budgeting for one hundred and forty-five employees. They're never gonna get to one hundred and forty-five employees. And at the time that we did these numbers, there were ninety people staffed. And so, I kind of gave, gave you guys some variant, the differences of the current salary versus the proposed salary for the one hundred and forty-five employees. And then, the difference of current salary and proposed salary with the number of employees at ninety. So, you're looking at anywhere between eight hundred thousand to one point two million. Is that, am I explaining that well?
Comparing, comparing the two.
Correct, so, honestly, you're gonna be, you're gonna be somewhere in between there, because hopefully, you'll be able to get to ninety employees and then above. But you're never really ever going to be at one hundred and forty-five, and I don't think that you guys have ever fully been staffed at that, but per your contract, you have to budget at one hundred and forty-five, is that correct? Okay.
Sure, I totally understand, between eight hundred thousand, one two million, and additional appropriations beyond what's budgeted.
Correct.
You
When we made the budget process last year, we projected mere couple hundred thousand dollars in surplus in that, in that structural balance. I've not made any changes to those revenue projections. I don't know if you guys have made any changes, so I would say that this will put us in a deficit for this year. We'll lose about a million dollars. We have U S reserves, question mark. We have great reserves, but you can only do that so many times.
And we may be saving because we don't have this amount of personnel right now, but we're also paying overtime.
Right, right, that's the other factor, the huge amount of overtime.
Correct, and Steve Noonan had, he had calculated that if we do not try to make a change in the proposed salary at this projection, keeping with the current salary, the overtime costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. And so, you would be projecting, you'd be projecting to be in a deficit, only an overtime of two point four million by the end of the year. So, you kind of have to juggle which is, which is the best of the worst here.
Two point four million deficit as well, just like
It's eating up a little bit by understaffing.
Right.
The problem is, is what's happening is you're, you're starting to understaff faster and faster and faster as you burn your people out.
So, either way, we're gonna But if we don't do this, it's gonna be worse. You know, last, last week, it was fifty, now it's fifty-six, right? We can't, we can't go according like that.
Right, you make a really good point, Rafael, because every week that I've met with
Making a general point.
Yeah, you make a good point, because every week that I've met with Steve and Rachel, the numbers have continued to increase in the sense of vacant.
Million dollars?
Yeah.
Say that again? Thirty million dollars in the general fund.
Abby, when we budgeted, refresh your memory, when we budgeted for those hundred and forty-five positions, we did full layout for benefits, correct?
Yes.
So, that those will actually be in achieved savings as well, wouldn't it?
Yes.
For insurance, FICA, per, those should add up to something to help maybe
Yeah, and on
Eight hundred and one point two million?
You are correct, because in on that first page there, I do have FICA health, I mean, it's all included. The FICA, PERF, and health is all included on that breakdown. If you need
No. I, I just want to make sure that, that, that could be factored in too, that we, you are gonna be paying benefits of one hundred point five, which is probably what, forty thousand plus per employee?
Yes, and
Per, by, by, um.
Yes, and as they take on the part-time option, which I don't know if you have hired anybody for part-time, I know that there were, and there was interest when we spoke. But that's gonna be a cost savings on the benefit portion as well. So, yes.
Sure.
Potential liability.
They have to take sixteen. And they can't, so you see thirty-two. So, would it be possible to get a range, possibilities to figure in all the savings Mark was mentioning, plus the savings, all that overtime we'd be saving as to what we're talking about as far as a deficit amount, or is that just too foggy of a
A little bit foggy, because I think that the eight hundred thousand is a good number, because if you start to try to get into the overtime, you're trading overtime for empty positions. As your empty positions increase, you're actually getting savings, you're just burning your people at all that.
And I did try to calculate the overtime, but like Steve said, it is foggy because you're trading positions. But I did mark on there that Steve had, is able to say that merit officers alone, the merit officers are the street officers, correct? Is forty-eight thousand in a month in overtime. So, if you, if they're able to hire eleven new staff members with this new proposed salary, you're gonna save instantly forty-eight thousand a month by not having to pull over merit officers.
Pull hair off the street, what we do.
More overtime, I think, now. Correct.
Let's think about that fact. What, so it's, as far as I'm This is just, wrenches officers, right? That, what, what, oh, you're short troll officers too. So, what's, what's the status on that look like, I mean?
We're, we're about that.
Twenty, yeah, we're about twenty merit.
Shot.
And we need to fund that, and, um, how's that gonna affect too, when we're talking now, you get these numbers, now we're gonna have to get more patrol out there, that's, that's serious. Um, you spoke of those numbers, I'm sure, are having, having
They're bigger numbers, yeah. Yeah. Right, here, correctly, if I'm wrong, if the jail were fully staffed or even closer to fully staffed, that's a bit of your feeding fishing pool for merit officers, because you're able to train, check them out, make sure that they're ready. Do we do better on the road when we have a full jail, that we can pull people up?
So, you recruit that kind of harder, in a way, so you're trying to get on the road.
So, to, to add more confusion, we have four corrections officers that I'm in the process of promoting to the rank of officer.
Right.
Meritor.
Yeah.
Troll. But I can't take all four of them out of jail at the same time, because I'll never hear from my jail staff. One, uh, but we just can't do that. So, I, I can pull from the jail, but this is causing difficulty doing that because we're so short in the jail.
Awesome. That fifty-seven short doesn't count those four. It would actually be sixty-one, or it will be sixty-one.
Well, you do buy yourself a three-year window if you recruit some eighteen-year-olds that may want to be a merit officer.
Oh, absolutely.
So, you prove yourself in the jail for three years.
Two of the four that I'm currently promoting did exactly that. They started in our jail at the age of eighteen. One will be promoted next month, and the goal is to promote the second eighteen-year-old, now soon to be twenty-one-year-old in July.
Should recruit, all the high schools are slowly getting there?
We're getting there.
Like to say to, um, some of the applications I think that are coming in are actually because of our staff, like, our, our staff know that we're meeting with you guys, that we came and met with you a few weeks ago, um, and that we're crying. And I think that's really pushing some positivity, the fact that, you know, we're doing part-time and we civilianize the lobby, so we're trying to get them help, and the, the mood's changed. Everybody has been tired and disgruntled and just not happy. Rightfully so, but I feel like the last few weeks, things have started tipping the other way. And I think that this has a lot to do with it, and I think that has a lot to do with why we're getting more applications, because people are sharing on Facebook, you know, about openings and the part-time positions and everything like that, so. I think that'll
Is there a motion on bill thirty-eight twenty-four? If bill number thirty-eight twenty-four combined with bill number thirty-five twenty-four F moves forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Between your minds, gotta go recruit.
Bill number thirty-five twenty-four G, an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars Public Defender.
Good evening, um, Jeff Kimmel, Chief Public Defender for Saint Joseph County, here with Andrea Bichkovsky, my deputy chief. Our offices are located on the second floor of courthouse number one. Um, this money that we're asking, uh, for with this bill, uh, is actually not county money. This is money that, uh, has been given to us from the federal government, uh, through a Title Four D grant. And so, basically, what we're asking for you to do is just to allow us to spend money that we've received, uh, because the Auditor's Office expects that to happen for the State Board of Accounts. So, the beautiful thing about this money is that when we spend it, and not only does it not cost the county any money, but it, the county will actually get forty percent back from the state because we spend it towards public defense. And that's what we plan on doing with the money. Uh, we want to use it to hire, uh, lawyers on an hourly contractual basis to take cases that we're receiving, uh, in excess of what we're able to handle as an apartment, uh, while still staying within the, uh, caseload limitations that the, um, pub, Indiana Public Defender Commission puts on us. So, they're willing to give the county back forty percent of everything we spend as long as I can tell them, honestly, them keeping the lawyers under a manageable caseload. If we get too high above that, they can pull that money away. And we've, we've been above that number, uh, skirting above it for, uh, the past several quarters, and we're above it again this quarter. Now, we've been working with them, and they've been receptive, um, to not pulling our funding, because we're working on a continuous plan to fix the problem, uh, last Um, to not pulling our funding because we're working on, you know, continuous plan to fix the problem, uh, last. Uh, year you budgeted us an extra money for full-time employees, and, and that kept them satisfied, but we're still getting more cases than we can handle. Uh, so this money will help, and it, uh, it really just puts money in the county's coffers and helps us fix a problem.
Is this just a one-time gift, or?
No, so this money, uh, we get the grant, to get this money was really easy, alls I had to do was sign a paper saying that we're providing. Uh, representation to the people in termination of rental rights types cases, and we, we do that out of our budget that, that you allow us. Uh, and as long as we do that, then the government takes a fraction of what we're spending on that, and they, they get, give it back to us, so, um. It, it won't be a one-time thing, I, I'd like to spend as much of this money, uh, towards, uh, public defense as I can, because it. Uh, the more I spend, the more it helps us, and the more money it brings back the county from the state. So, uh, it'd be a one-time hit this year, but I, uh, it, I'll probably, now that we've got a line item established, I'll ask for. A budget, uh, right now, there's a little over forty two thousand dollars in the account, so this is a good chunk of it, I don't know that I'll spend all of it, but I, I may need it the way things are looking. So probably every year, at the beginning of the year, we'll ask for, you know, allow us to spend some part of that money. It's a renewable source too, so as long as we keep providing that, and as long as the grants that are.
Is bill number thirty nine twenty four a salary amendment from the public defender with an appropriation of twenty seven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents?
So, uh, on this bill, we are actually asking for county money, what we're trying to do and what we need to do. Uh, is to take one of our part-time positions for a lawyer who receives, uh, a salary based on a fifty-five percent caseload, and turn that lawyer into a full-time employee. And when I do that, uh, and, and this person will handle a mixed, uh, caseload between, uh, level five and level six felonies. And to, uh, draw comparison, if I'm paying somebody fifty-five percent of a full-time. Uh, salary, I can give them about eighty-two F-six felonies or fifty-five F-five felonies, by converting them to full-time, I could give them a hundred F-five felonies or a hundred and fifty X. F-six felonies, so it just will, uh, put a, a, a nice expansion into the number of cases that we can absorb. And that we need to be able to absorb, because we're just getting a lot of cases assigned to us, um, and we've had, uh. Lots of five people, some, some have gone to private practice, um, two of them have sent it to the bench, uh, David Francisco is a superior court judge now, Michelle Louts. So, on the bench in the juvenile court, uh, we have Neil Wiseman retiring, so it's kind of put a, a pinch, um, the active people we have that can pay cases, so by. Uh, expanding this spot where I've got a person who's willing to say, yeah, I can want a full-time or a private practice, I want to do this full-time. Uh, it, it's the most cost-efficient, efficient way for us to really expand the, the caseload we have as opposed to trying to hire more people.
As you said, you have someone retiring.
No, so we, so we've, we've, uh, filled all the, all but one of the spots, so this is not budget neutral, because we're taking. Uh, a salary that's currently at forty-three, one sixty-two, and that will go up to seventy-eight thousand four seventy-seven. But by paying him a full-time salary, I can then give him a full-time caseload. And, and forty percent of that extra still will come back to the county as reimbursement, so the increase is forty percent less than it would sound like. Difference here, I think, is prorated for a start date of May first, or at that conversion date.
Is there a motion on bill thirty? All with a favor?
All right.
Bill number thirty nine twenty four combined with number thirty five twenty four F, goes forward with a favorable recommendation. All I have.
Next is land was planned, building with thirty-four dash point four, whole book of memory. Size tattoo body piercing. Missionary area plan.
Yes.
Sean Klein, area plan, which is staffed with offices on the left floor of those buildings. Uh, so this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance concerning the, the districts that, uh, had to impair certain establishments and massage establishments are submitted in. Uh, under the current ordinance, had to and piercing is recognized as a full of use, uh, meaning that it has some objectionable secondary, uh, impacts. Uh, it's therefore only permitted in the I industrial district and as special use in C commercial. Uh, we are proposing that we remove it from being a controlled use, uh, really, this is motivated by, uh, special use petitions, uh, we had three within the past year. Uh, we didn't really receive any sort of public remonstrance at any public hearings associated with them, um, which seems to suggest that. In the minds of the public, they don't really classify this use as one that, um, has these objectionable secondary impacts, and just in general. Uh, tattoos and piercings are more, um, universally acceptable than they were, uh, when the zoning ordinance was originally written. Uh, so that's the, the motivation there, um, it would now be a primary use in the B business, C commercial, A and I industrial district. Uh, again, um, this is a use that is also heavily regu- regulated by the county health department. Uh, we feel that's sufficient to, um, protect the, the public health and safety, and once that's accounted for, it really just becomes a land use that's analogous to a number of the uses that are permitted in the. Uh, B, C, and I districts in terms of the impact to the, uh, vicinity. Uh, but this will also, um. Reclassify massage salons such that they're permitted as, as a, um, special use in office. Currently, they're only a primary use in the B business district and C commercial, once again, these are heavily regulated by the health department. Um, we find that it often in cases, uh, they'll be analogous to other personal care facilities such as, um, barbers, beauty shops, things of that nature. Uh, such that it would be appropriate to allow them as a special use in office. Uh, the third part of this text amendment just, um, fixes a scripter's error in numbering resulting from a past tax amendment, it's, uh, not related to the, uh, tattoos or. Establishments, um, other than that, this comes to you from the area plan commission with a favorable recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question?
Thank you. I know this is under our. But I think there's an element of this that I'm, I'm not concerned from a land use planning standpoint, uh, but it's not been too long ago that from a human services criminal justice standpoint. There was human trafficking that occurred within local massage parlors that, um, was pervasive, and, uh, presumably. That activity was shut down, uh, uh, completely and comprehensively, but, uh. Do we really know that for sure?
A consultation with the county health department, they have, um, no opposition to what we're proposing on the land use side, uh, that is always going to be a constant concern, I believe, um. They do still have to do routine inspections and that sort of thing, uh, but they don't really have any qualms with us allowing it in an additional district, so.
I appreciate that, I, I truly, I just wanted to ensure that those conversations took place, that there was an understanding.
Is the word therapeutic included in that definition of massage salons versus massage salon standalone?
It is not, um.
Would be worth putting the word therapeutic in there, because a lot of times I see them associated with freestanding practices, either in, in therapeutic massage or in chiropractic offices, so I mean, that. Would it be worth putting that word in there, maybe?
That distinction should be made. Maybe that's more of a health department, but that distinction should be made where I, where I.
Would you say then that it would have to be accessory to other treatment? No? Okay, okay.
I'm saying in, in the definition.
In the definition.
Distinction between what he's talking about and just the regular massage, though, I was just gonna say, I knew Mr. Tanner was good, but I know you were a mind reader, because I was thinking the exact same thing. On these massage salons, it's just not good.
Yeah.
Not a lot of them.
No, I, I. I think adding that to the definition.
Right, yeah, it, it, it should be.
Hi, sorry, Abby Wild, Director for Area Plan. Uh, I do want to say that we consulted the health department, we met with Mark Usbich and two of the staff that do inspections for these uses, prior to putting the text amendment forward. And I believe the way we raised the classifications in the zoning ordinance, or I mean, as the, in the text amendment to the zoning ordinance reflects how the health department describes them on their end.
So you said distinction is already being made?
We modeled our ordinance based on how they, uh, how, on how they describe the uses.
Okay, so I guess the other question is, when you say routine inspections through the health department, are those unannounced, or do they know when they're coming?
I can't speak to all their, all their processes, I know, I, it's my understanding from our meeting, I believe they do them on a yearly basis. I don't, uh, Mark Usbich would have to clarify if there are more specific questions in regards to that.
All inspections, and we're talking about criminal activity, that's a two.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But in regards to how we look at them in the zoning ordinance and.
No, I get that, I get that, I get that, as far as the difference between what you're doing and the health department, I just think something needs to change. As far as stricter guidelines, not what you're saying through the health department, I'll be more than happy, talk to my buddy Mark.
Does make.
On, on these?
I can tell you, they do for salons, and if they do for salons, I bet they do for those.
Well, that, that's good, no, I don't know it. No, no, that's why I'm asking you.
Well, another question.
I'm gonna make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
So you compared them to, I think you made a comparison to barber shops or, is barber shops allowed to use no office?
It is, yes, yeah.
Got a model fight, maybe you can move that for help, or, you know, may not want to lose their view again.
I, is that something that you want us to look into, we can do that?
Maybe there was a report.
Um, this is, like I said, this is really, we put this forward, sorry, apologize, I'll stand it up again, so the tattoo really was put forward because. You all had three special uses, and we didn't want to send a word to you, uh, unnecessarily, the massage came forward because we had a number of folks. Running legitimate operations that were running into, uh. Like complications with the zoning ordinance, and they are more common, you know, uh, in terms of. Of the use of being in the districts that, that we're recommending, but it's not like. We put this forward because there's one under the gun that's trying to locate from the district, they can take a pause if you want us to, uh, confirm that how we are describing them reflects how the health department describes them.
Out of curiosity, Mr. O'Brien, would there be an enforceable legal distinction between therapeutic massage and massage, uh, salon?
It seemed very subjective to me, I, I think.
So I, unfortunately, I think changing the language invades our intent, but may have a legal.
And that might be beneficial just to convey the intent.
That's what I'm saying, exactly, excellent point, that's exactly what I'm saying. Change, you know, as far as the out is gone, part of the perception. Exactly. Have a motion in second. All with a favor?
Yeah, we're, we're almost. We have more information.
Yeah, we'll take another look into that.
I can keep my motion on the floor.
All with a favor, say aye?
Aye, I oppose.
Thank you. The next one is something that's been held in committee. Bill number twenty-five dash twenty-four, special use of property located, five four wants to sign to the road, patient Miller, Frederick's brother. I'd like to know is, I'd like to have someone make the motion to move this. Uh, onto the floor.
I'll make the motion and move it on the floor on the committee.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, let's back on.
That is too many, that was safe before, wasn't it?
Now we're gonna discuss. Okay. Then you again, Sean?
Right, uh, Sean Klein again, area plan commission staff, um, so as you know, the purposes of this special use is to establish a. Uh, concrete batch plant at the southwest corner of Tulip Road and US twenty. Um, this is a special use that's available in the A agricultural, uh, our single-family and I industrial district, in this case, the property is zoned A agricultural. What it looks like currently, let's look. And looking across. Okay, uh, looking at the, uh, submitted site plan, um, they're proposing to place the batch plant in the northwest corner of the site. Uh, it would be set back two hundred feet from the US, um, twenty right of way, uh, it looks like the, the plant would be, uh. Towards the front, and then they'd have storage, uh, to the rear of that, um, the access would have to be from US twenty. Uh, they are proposing, um, a berm that would provide screening to the north, to the, uh, east and to the west. Uh, they're proposing six foot to the north and four feet to the east and the west, in addition to the berm, landscaping would be required to the north and to the east. At a rate of two evergreens per thirty feet, uh, resulting in thirty-five evergreens being planted along the east and, um, thirty-five along the north. Per the county engineer, um, they would need to access, uh. Specially designated truck routes and, um, state roads. So essentially, they couldn't access Tulip, they would need to access US twenty, uh, from there, they could come south via Smilex, uh, west via a portion of Edison. And then further south via Larison to US two.
Via Edison off of smiling.
Off of smiling. Not off a tool, no, not access to look, correct, correct. So yeah, it would start up at twenty, then down Smilex to Addison. Does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the area board of zoning appeals, um, the vote on that was four two. Uh, however, this recommendation is subject to five proposed written commitments, uh, the first being that the developers shall adhere to a berm and vegetation screening plan approved by staff. Second being that truck traffic, uh, is limited to those state routes and the county roads designated as truck routes by the county engineer. Uh, third, there should be, there shall be no material extraction and mining on-site. Uh, for the concrete plant operation, shall comply with all performance standards contained in the, uh, zoning ordinance. Uh, otherwise, those would not be applicable because the property is owned A agricultural, and fifth, the special use would need to be renewed after five years of operation. Again, this came to you with a recommendation favorable four two, at the public hearing, there were twelve who spoke in remonstrance, uh, they had concerns related to traffic on US twenty. Uh, the general location of the plant, dust mitigation, desire for a time limit of operation, um, and. Desire for a time limit for the special use itself, I just want to remind you that you need to act on this by. Seventeenth, um, otherwise, it will automatically go into effect as recommended by the area board of zoning appeals, um, otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Sean?
Sean, um. Approximately, a couple slides back, you showed there a little site.
Yeah.
Is that about half property question, or is that just that northwest?
No, it's just that northwest corner, when you look over to the left.
So when we vote on a special use and subject to site plan, might assume that we're saying it's subject to site plan?
You could make it.
The remainder of that property couldn't be part of the special use, could it, or meaning?
Or you could make it subject to that specific site plan, such that it could only occupy that area, that's correct.
That wouldn't be another written commitment we'd have to add.
Yeah, that's probably the best way to do it.
Any other questions for Sean? How many acres is that, Sean? That's on right now, that, that's.
It's around ten.
State highway, tell me about N dot on that, I know we talked about this before, can you elaborate on that, N dot approvals and so forth?
Yeah.
That's what I'm here for.
Okay, great. That's here from the petitioner.
Rob Nichols with, uh, Almiron's Consult.
Rob Nichols with the Almert Consultants, three fifteen East Jefferson, right down, obviously, um, you've been retained by.
Something to do with the area of the bypass for V flower. I was advising somebody to toss a large bag of trash.
Okay. You've been retained by the petitioner to do a. One of my matters and have the initial conversation with N dot on what they require on their state of the force.
Yes.
Just checking. So we've had those initial conversations within that, um, I talked to Michael Hertz, he's the permanent investigator for this area, uh, in our district. They would require typical in that driveway for medicine requirements with that, including. Four hundred and eighty foot long turn lane based on speed and traffic volume of the current road. Uh, that is what the schematically shows, or the seat is out there, but. Um, determining four hundred and eighty foot, um, that's what the petitioner is uh proposing. That would meet all in that requirements for that current lane and traffic that would come in and out of that plant. Um, again, that would be. Instructed by the petitioner and all be located within in dots right away. So it doesn't approach any county right away. If you answer any questions from in that process. That's only for South Hurry and Diggle's coming in from the west, I presume?
Yes.
How about anybody coming from the east? Um, delivery trucks with aggregate and things like that, or or will all that come from the west intentionally? Uh, I can't speak to what direction it will come from, um, but I can say that in that, based on the current traffic volume. That they would not require a certain turn lane or passing list or there. They also said that they would not require traffic.
Thank you. Any other questions? Have you looked at any other locations? I know I've talked to Hasha's help before, um. Has anybody looked at, like, have you got a bunch of other locations?
Red Web, Kirk Concrete, uh, five nine oh nine, Nems Parkway. I'm here with Jim Sellers, also same address. Uh, Jim, I think has been in conversation with one property owner, um, on a different parcel inside the I E C and say repotfully zone, but. Um, we have not come to any agreement, I think a little ways apart, uh, purchase price. And where we would be, so I'm not sure the likelihood of that coming to fruition.
My problem is, uh, the traffic on twenty, it's a two lane road. How many trucks are in and out there a day? Or the application, is it a hundred? Is that?
Yeah, a hundred. Speak on volume based on the traffic volume on that road of over four thousand cars a day, it's a, you know, very small physical percentage. And this does need a truck route for the state. Abby, sorry to put you on the spot, or. Maybe Mr. Flying, I I thought we had this conversation when we talked about things recently. Was there talk about within an I E C, or is that future conversations? Not current conversations about allowing a batch plant on an actual I E C. Construction site.
On a.
Like a temporary, a more temporary batch plant than what they're before.
It's a. Very a plan's position after looking at the ordinance that we would allow it as a temporary use. We would approve it uh with an improvement location permit for a temporary structure and make it basically permitted for the. The length of the construction, serving whatever use it was on, whatever use would be constructed on site.
On that particular site. Are you guys in that conversation, or are you guys?
Know the talk of all. In all the bidding activity today, we've had that uh those discussions with property owners and they're been, they will not allow that.
Oh, sorry, I've got a question for, oh, I don't sponsor here. Excuse me for questioning your experts, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Um, but then most of our category, so. So coming from the west slowing down, concerned about a truck getting here and turning right into the facility. But they're not concerned about a truck going from the east west stopped. Waiting to turn left into the facility, is that what, is that the logic I'm seeing?
Initially, that's what they conveyed. Now, I can't say once we, you know, this is again schematic. Once we submit this to terminals, they come back and say. But we haven't gone down that road because without, without knowing if it's allowed or.
Yeah, why can't they do that now? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if you're saying they're not doing it now, but they might come back later and do it.
They are notorious for changing their mind.
This is just a, this is possibly that's why they're not saying anything now?
Yeah. And I just ran into the same, I can give you, I can give you a bigger, for instance, something very similar. They wrote for we're doing the delivery. We were designed, we're going all the way north, and that wouldn't even review the permit for that roadway until the project award.
So how they, how do they expect us to make a?
In that is so notoriously understaffed right now that they're pushing projects out five additional years, projects that were previously funded. For next year or the next few years or past.
But, okay, I understand it.
Okay, because they don't have the capacity to review.
Well, no, okay.
They would, they would, they would review the drive permit based on their standard they have in place, based on traffic volume, based on like this, and what, somebody leave them. They deserve salaries, huh?
Yeah, I was just saying. Feeling, um, Mr. Pan's right statement about going in the I E C, industrial or ag, are we talking about? Part of the I E C.
Temporary construction. It, we would, provided that the underlying use was permitted, we would allow it as part of the construction, we would.
In the, in the industrial part?
I mean, regardless of, I mean.
It doesn't matter where.
Yeah, so that's just kind of like a determination we make under the zoning ordinance, but specific to the use, it. Could go in the I E C, but on an agriculturally zoned parcel, because those are. Ag parcels are exempt from the I E C overlay. By the way, the overlay district is written.
It would still require a special use.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah.
Um, inside the industrial of is the overlay, they can't go in there. Could we make an amendment to that? I mean, if say they knocked on General Motors' door, I said, hey, why can't we build a plant, temporary plant right on your piece of. I'm, I know it sounds oversimplified.
And build a temporary plant if it's, if it's for the construction of of that facility.
It does that, so.
You said that's not a possibility.
Well, they're the property owner, so obviously they have the ability to say yes or no, they would allow that. To this point, they do not have interest in having a plan on.
So I just wanted to make sure I I heard you correctly.
Yeah.
So what you're saying, if they. It's just a temporary, that site only, so any other development, maybe.
They can make concrete for a DM project, because again, they concrete for another project.
So that would, that would limit them to just that.
Right. That's, that's not a solution.
No, that is, I thought, I thought, yeah, that's the only solution.
I still have reservations on the location, and with it being a twenty, uh, I gotta make a motion to move unfavorable. They ever say aye? Oppose? Okay, three opposed, and so let's, let's do it, boys. So, Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dan's right.
Nate? Great.
And I'm the last one. So I'm gonna say aye, so that means it's.
So, so it does not go with an unfavorable?
Cause I don't have a vote, huh?
Right.
And another motion, with a low recommendation or?
Yeah, that make motion or recommendation.
Even though I'm not on the committee.
Take it, no recommendation. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
So it goes with no recommendation?
Right, no recommendation. Okay, next, Rules Committee. The Rules Committee, no presentation tonight. I don't think there's a discussion on budget.
No, we already do it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we just blew it, so.
You represent, um, last, we, we by the commissioner was the holding for, you know. Future of the county city building and any future. Need for space, and they have a marsh that is in the deal, so. Rather than. I think we need to maybe take a proactive approach and present the material to us. Should we, why don't we go forward and maybe form a task force that includes members of the council? To come up with ideas versus being fed disinformation that we may have to act on the record without our employees.
What do you mean ideas? Because that's what they were supposed to do, and we paid them, we just gave us ideas.
They gave us ideas.
No, ideas alone from us, what we think about their idea.
We should, we should have wait, we should have wait buy-in and and the ability to await.
If I may, if I may reframe, are you saying that you would rather us have input on what is presented to us for a legtery? Request rather than waiting until something is simply presented to?
Yes.
Correct, okay, Mr. Shetland.
That makes sense, more sense.
Correct me if I'm wrong, sir. Now, if I misunderstood you, then let me humbly apologize, but I thought. That I. I thought, sir, Steve Kelly, sir, I thought that I heard you say that you would not even consider. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm I'm getting, I'm getting mixed up, I'm sorry. Okay, alright, okay, my bad. Okay, okay, good, you up in the four month, okay, now. I apologize. I was gonna quote you, but that was on the other issue. Okay, you're right, you're right. My humble apologies. Now, getting back to this. Okay, as far as I'm concerned, I think that's a great idea, because there seems to be some very strong feelings. From the seventh floor on what we should do, as far as staying or leaving. And I feel very strongly about input, and I'm not gonna even say task force. I'm gonna say all nine of us calling special meetings or whatever. They taking that same approach that you said about the other issue. Um, really looking at this thing in a very detailed manner. Because, uh, I was at the presentation and I thought, I thought from both D L Z and Avon Marsh. They did great as far as their due diligence and their detail, but, um. This is, this is, uh, I've already had people in the community that saw it on the news or whatever, probably W S P T. But, um, that saw it and are, and they're asking me, seriously, constantly, what are you guys gonna do? Oh, my God, oh, my God. I just think it's that serious of an issue moving forward. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, I mean, like I say, you know, you you can say task force, you can call it whatever you want. I just feel like.
And and if that history is any predictor of past and the future. We look at the, you know, Portage Manor situation, we were given a presentation, and then a month later. Month and a half later, we were told, hey, we're gonna close Portage Manor, and and I just think, I think we all wanna have a voice on this. This is an important. Piece of our future for the county. Um, for example, I mean, it's not apples to apples, but Michigan City. A developer is proposing a twelve story high rise with an adjacent parking structure with five hundred forty-nine parking spaces. With a price tag of a hundred million dollars. But, uh, obviously, some of these proposals we were seeing there were throwing that number around at a hundred million, but that's a five hundred forty-nine. Space parking structure, which is something we probably could use, based on what we heard with some of these numbers about how many employees are in the building. Um, versus the public wants to come to the building. Now, we said parking is an issue. So I, I think, I think we need to explore a lot of options, and I think we should be a part of that process.
That point you just quoted, that was, that was a development, and it was a high rise and the parking structure.
There was higher rising number. Parking structure, no, the whole, the whole project, fourteen story, fourteen story of high rise. I know it's, it's an apartment structure, apartment building. But five hundred forty-nine parking spaces. I mean, that's a hundred million dollars for a brand new scratch construction of both structures. And some of the prices I'm hearing are estimates out of these, 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 um, estimates from D L Z. Will carry in those kinds of price tags, and I'm just curious. If you can afford all of our options, you know, I think we should have a voice to table, especially when it comes to. Talking as important as county city.
Because at the end of the day.
Should say the county building was, not gonna be the county city.
Exactly, the county building, exactly. So at the end of the day, Mr. Dog, Brett made from wrong. Before anyone does anything, we have to appropriate the money.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thanks. So therefore, that's even more so a reason. That we need to do our due diligence on what the hell we're gonna do as far as staying here or moving. Because there's a lot to this scenario. I mean, that's, you know, so just going by what D L Z is saying and not asking questions and talking about us, talking about it. All nine of us and having really good input and serious discussions, I think if we don't do that, then shame on us. That's just me.
No, there were some good ideas presented, but there might be a hybrid idea that nobody's thought of yet, that maybe one of the nine of us has, that maybe.
But it's the job of the executive branch to take what D L Z has there, to use their experts. And to come up with what they think is the best plan. If we have, want to evaluate that plan and say, no, we think, we think, we won't fund that. Let's look at this. I don't have a problem with that, but I think let's let the executive branch do what they do first. And then we can go from there.
What do you mean do what they do? They've, they've already done.
Well, I think they've done part of it, but we haven't gotten any, any recommendations from. Let's let them.
I mean, okay, I don't have a problem with, I know, I don't have a problem, Dan, with letting them, I shouldn't say letting them. Having them make their recommendations to us. No, no, I'm more than happy to wait for that. I'm just saying, this is. When I sat there and saw the presentations, I'm just going. Well, God, I mean, I knew, you know, I knew it was serious.
Any of us want to spend a hundred million.
No, not, no, no, yeah, no, you're right. I'm not saying that just because of the money. I'm saying it because of everything involved. Okay.
What do you?
I'm saying all the different.
Facial analysis.
Correct, correct. If you logistics, if you do this, it's gonna still take two to three years, if you do that, if you don't do that. If you look at, uh, allocating more space to a different office, there are so many options. That's what I'm saying, man. And and when I am then, and then.
Building supplies to other.
Right, right, and then, and then you look at, um, you know, what, if you, oh, we're gonna have to replace. The boilers, or we're gonna keep on having, you know, but.
Be in appropriation to that next month, month, month.
Exactly. I mean, there's just so much to this, man. And like I say, no, I see what you're saying. I'm not saying let's jump the gun before they gave us a recommendation. Oh, yeah, fine, let's wait on a recommendation, but the day after the recommendation, let's get to work. That's just me.
Well, all those things you mentioned, it should be the function of the executive branch to figure that out, come to us with a plan. We look at that plan and move forward, and if we wanna take that plan and talk about it, discuss it. We reject it and say, let's, let's, we're concerned about A, B, and C, great, but it's their job to take all of those factors. Use their experts and bring them together.
I don't disagree with that, not at all.
Alright.
Alright.
I'll tell you what, I'll call Mr. Root, depending on when he presents.
We just interject, if if there is like a steering committee or whatever, if you have a meeting and there's five or more council folks, we gotta notice it, so.
That's what I'm saying, special meetings was on that.
Right, if it's a special meeting, then.
Avatar, yes, we know that, yes, but I appreciate it, but yeah.
Yeah, good night.
Alright.
Anything else? That feels ready.
I gotta run.
Yes. Alright, thank you.